Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here at the City of Mableton City Council meeting. And for always showing your support for what we do here. It's Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. It's 6:30 PM. So I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. Our Mayor, Mayor Owens, is unable to join us today. So as the Mayor Pro Tem, I will be presiding over today's meeting. I want to thank all of you again for your attendance and your commitment. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Owens, not present.
But I count it four.
Okay. Councilmember of District 1, Ron Davis.
Present.
Councilmember of District 2, Damian Oladipo.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember of District 3, Keisha Jeffco.
Present.
And Councilmember of District 4, Patricia Alk.
Present.
Councilmember of District 5, TJ Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember of District 6, Deborah Herndon.
Present.
We have our quorum.
Thank you. We'll now go to item 3, which is our invocation. Councilman Davis, could you please lead us in an invocation?
Yes, very carefully, Father. We thank you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for your grace and mercy, O Father. And we just pray right now for your continued guidance as we move this city forward, Father. We pray for these residents, for these elected officials, that we will work together in unity, Father, to achieve the goal that you've set before us. We thank you and praise you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Amen. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Ferguson, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this now moves us to item number 5, approval of our agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. We're going to move on. The ayes have it, my apologies. The ayes have it. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to item number 6, public hearing. We don't have any public hearings right now, so we'll move on to our presentation, acknowledgements, and proclamation. Ms. Jo Latham, the South Cobb Regional Manager, will like to provide us with the South Cobb Library Report. Is Ms. Layman here? Oh, she is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Cobb County Public Library System has 14 branches and a bookmobile. The branches are divided into four regions. We have the West Cobb Region, Mountain View Region, Central Region, and the South Cobb Region. The South Cobb Region has five branches. We have Vinings and Vinings, Lewis Ray and Smyrna's, Powder Springs and Powder Springs, Sweetwater in Austell, and the South Cobb Regional Library is right here in the city of Mableton. Some of the libraries have specialties, such as the Switzer Library has accessibility services for the special needs. We have the Georgia Room for Georgia History, and we have preservation services for where you can preserve all your memories and things that are important to you, even cassettes. The Sewell Mill Library has the Creative Studio. North Cobb has sewing machines and sewing classes. And our new Gridders Library should open this month, and it will have workforce development inside. My name is Jo Layman, and I am the Regional Manager for the South Cobb Region of the Cobb County Public Library System.
Hi, my name is Nikisha McNeil, and I'm one of the Adult Services Librarians here at South Cobb Regional Library. Next slide, thank you. So, what's at the library? So, we have lots of databases and free streaming that you can use. You don't even actually have to come into the library. Some of our most popular databases will be the Gail Legal Farms. Will be the Gail Legal Farms. As far as free streaming, we don't have Netflix or Hulu, but you will be able to access music classes, some classic old shows.
And yes, we do have books and DVDs, but we also have Chromebooks that are available for you to check out. We have those that you check out, and they are already internet-enabled, which means you don't need Wi-Fi or internet or anything. And we also have Chromebooks. They're available inside for in-house checkout. Then you use the library's Wi-Fi. We have Chromebook kits for organizations. For instance, if an organization needs a set of Chromebooks for any reason, you can check out a Chromebook kit, which consists of 12 Chromebooks. We also have lunchpads, which are grade-specific for our students. There are iPads that have educational material on them. We have Wonder Books. Those are for the pre-K students. Those are books that read to the students, and they just follow along.
Okay. Cobb County supports small businesses. One of the resources that you can access from our website is our Small Business Center. So feel free to come in and ask us about that. We also have book club kits if you want to start your own book club instead of coming in person to your local branch. We have a host of computer classes at most of our branches. We also have 3D printing at the South Cobb Library. So if you ever had any interest in that, please stop by.
We have programs for children, adult, young adults. We have programs for everyone. Some of our programs includes...
We have the Storytimes. Other than the computer classes, we also have ESL classes. We have fitness and wellness classes, such as belly dancing and grief support. And let's not forget about our passes. We have about 15 different passes that you can check out that admit up to four family members, and that includes the Atlanta Zoo Pass, the Pass to the Museums down in Macon, if you ever want to get out of town, the Center for Puppetry Art, and the Alliance Theater. Next slide. So, what we do.
Next slide.
The library system wants to be your first place to come for resources and services. And we provide access to those resources and services. And by one of the ways that we provide access is through our pass account. Pass account is an account that any student in the Cobb County school system can use their lunch number to access library materials, use the computers, and check out books. Now, this removes the barrier by eliminating the need for a parent or caregiver to have to present or sign up for a library card for students. And this supports the academic success of our students, because when our students succeed, we succeed. Over 600 of Cobb County students are regular users of their pass accounts to access digital, online resources. So the pass account is important. We also have books by mail. Now, this makes requesting and receiving books easy for those who are unable to physically come to the library. Community engagement. We engage with the community by attending meetings such as this. We attend community meetings. We go to the schools, and we go to town halls. We also have a meeting room that is available for our community to use at a small fee. We participate in education by partnering with institutions like Cobb Douglas Health, Emory University, Morehouse School of Medicine, to bring information to our community that is important for the success in their lives.
Outreach is also very dear to us with the Cobb County Library System. We love informing the community about various resources and educational opportunities. We go to schools, senior centers, community events, such as the Taste of Mableton. If you ever want us to come out and do anything, we will come out with a craft and books and other information for you. Next slide, please. So, what's coming up?
Next slide.
A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten is a statewide program that encourages parents to read to their children even before they're born. And we encourage them and support them in reading at least 1,000 books before the student enters kindergarten. Each year, we have at least two graduations for those students. And in January, on January 25th, the graduation will be held at the South Cobb Regional Library. It's been about two years since it was held at South Cobb. But that is an important date for those students. If you see them in the picture, how happy they are. So if you're available, put it on your calendar now, January 25th, for the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten graduation. The Cobb Foundation is putting together a list of back-to-school items that the librarians need to provide programs for the students. So that's one of our fundraisers. When that list is available, we will be coming to you to provide some of those and make donations for some of those sources. Casino night. So if you missed your chance to go to Las Vegas, don't worry, because we're having Casino Night on November 9th at the Atlanta Country Club. So get your tickets now and support the library. It's a lot of fun. If any of you have ever been there, you know that it is a lot of fun. So don't worry about Las Vegas. Just come to the Library Casino. I know you saw passports on the last slide. We have two libraries in the system that are successful passport centers. That's the West Cobb Library and the Mountain View Library. So we would like to bring that service to the South Cobb Library. We have written a letter of interest. We haven't heard yet, but we are contacting them. Why is that important when the post office is right across the street? Because for working people, you can't go to the post office at 5:30 and apply for a passport. But with this service for our community, you can just come to the South Cobb Library if we are accepted. And that is also a fundraiser that we have for the library, because we make money when we are a passport center. So look out for that.
Next slide.
And lastly, please support your local library. You can do that by donating to the fundraiser, by coming to Casino Night. But most importantly, please utilize your local library. We have a host of programs for all ages, all genders. Even if you can't come in person, there are virtual programs. Just please support your local library.
You can also support your local library by attending our bookstore. We just had a successful one this past weekend. We don't know how much money we made, but we think it will be the most successful one of all, because we had more items to sell. And this takes place twice a year. We also have, in the spring, we have our Foundation Gala. That is another fundraiser that you can participate in. And we do accept plain old donations. So if you want to donate, we accept that, too.
Last slide. Thank you so much for lending us your ear this afternoon. If you have any questions or comments, we welcome them, and thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Layman. Thank both of you all. When I was a kid, I used to spend a lot of time at the library. And now, I can't believe you have Casino Night, right? So I'm going to have to take advantage of that. And I encourage you to take advantage of a lot of the services that they provide. They have a computer lab, like they mentioned, programs, as well as, you know, going to get a new passport or renew your passport. So please make sure that you take advantage of those services. The next item on the agenda is appointments. At this time, we don't have any appointments. So that moves us to agenda item number nine, which is public comments. It's going to be two minutes per speaker, no more than 30 minutes for all speakers. And anyone wishing to make a public comment should complete and submit the public comment card, which you've already done. Please make sure you state your name, address, and the district that you're in. Do we have any public comment cards?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. Our first person is Phil Barnett. And after Phil is Monica Delancey.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Phil Barnett, living in Mableton on Blair Bridge Road. So I came here tonight to speak directly to you guys. There was a study that was brought out by Strong and Griffin, and there's $1.2 million spent in Cobb County with black contractors in construction. And with 27% of the folks, right? And then there's another part of the study that says 5% of the white women made $33 million. I've been in construction for 30 years, and I've never seen white women on the construction site doing 33% of the work for $33 million or what have you. My obligation right now is to protect the future kids that's coming up in the construction industry, because AI is coming, and it's going to take 40% of their jobs. The other night, the Amazon worker came to the house, got a cut on his head, blood gushing, so wifey took care of him. But he said he cut his head on the door when he was working. But Amazon said, keep on working, because you've got an hour left in your shift, right? So imagine that happened to you at work. You would be going home. He said he didn't have enough money for CVS. So we bandaged him up, right? So I'm speaking for him. I'm speaking for the younger version of me. And I need you guys to have a conversation with me, because everything that I said 10 years ago is happening now. From the woman being homeless, to the housing increase, the 20%, which you're not getting in your raises. Everything is happening, and your food shortage is coming up next. So what you saw in the news that happened in South Carolina barely missed us. But just imagine what would happen if it would hit us, because we don't have the infrastructure to put it back together. But we need to train our youth to put it back in order. I'm telling you what I know, and I've been from airports all the way down to federal prisons. We are not prepared for the work structure, so... Most folks know me. I'm Phil Barnett. You've got my information. If you want to sit down, I'll make the place comfortable enough for you guys to sit down and talk to me. I'm here to protect kids that are coming up. Pebblebrook and South Cobb, they never reached out to me. The Board of Ed, they never reached back out to me. So I need your help, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Monica Delancey. And after Monica is Michael Murphy.
Good evening. Monica Delancey, District 2. I'm here to make sure you know that from September 15th to October 15th, it's National Hispanic Month. I'm sure most of you've already attended a number of celebrations in the schools, and there's a couple going on in the community as well. Also, I want to invite you to the Renters Rights Summit that we Thrive in Riverside Renters Association, that would be hosting this Saturday, October 12th, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Antioch Loving Spirit Church, 6280 Britt Road, Mableton, Georgia. This opportunity will be not to... We will be there to support people, to let them know how to guide rental systems' resources. Cobb County is seeing 300 people a week on Fridays in eviction court, and 95% are African-American families every week. So therefore, we need to make sure that everybody knows how to navigate resources. Also, we're going to address how these apartment complexes and rental properties are not keeping up to their property. It's a shame that the best thing that Cobb County can do to the closest to affordable housing is to offer apartment complexes that's falling off, falling down. In too long, the Mableton-Austell community has been a dumping ground for transient, temporary housing, corporate landlord rental housing. Invitation Homes is also saying that they're seeing an uptick of renting properties in the Mableton-Austell area. So it's not just apartment complexes, right? And these people are bullies, and they know that when people speak up, all they've got to do is say, "We're not going to renew your lease." So therefore, Commissioner Schiffer will be at the meeting on Saturday, as well as District Attorney Flynn Brody, because there's a number of apartment complexes being on the list for the past eight years. And what they do is every year and a half, sell their properties, so they don't have to address these cold violations. Again, Renters Rights Summit this Saturday, October 12th. Thank you very much, Monica Delancey.
Thank you, Mr. Delancey.
Michael Murphy. And following Mr. Murphy is Denny Wilson. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Matthew Nicholson.
Well, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. And welcome back, our Madam Clerk and Attorney. Good to see you all back in good health. I was very impressed with the library report. Being a former member of the Library Board of Trustees, I'm glad to see that it is really expanding. And I urge all of you to join me, as I've been petitioning for, an additional hour of opening for the South Cobb Branch. I wanted to come before you this evening to kind of follow up on what information I gathered from the work session on Monday, where you had a presentation from your zoning consultant. And I could not help but notice that in the overview, he did talk about ADUs. And I just wanted to remind the council and all that, a couple of other areas that I hope you'll consider, and that is specifically inclusionary zoning and also tiny homes. Now, I know that perhaps this dimension of that gives some people heartburns, and I'm sure that as we get down the road, the Yenbiites will be very concerned. But I would certainly would like to suggest, I certainly, I'm on the board of FLRC. We have a 19-passenger bus. We certainly would like to offer a tour so that you could, if you're not already familiar with what ADUs look like, and I'm talking about real ADUs, and also real tiny homes. The perception seems to be, when one mentions tiny homes, you think about the homeless. You think about people that are down on their luck and so forth. But I can tell you that there are some excellent quality tiny homes, tiny home subdivisions. Only difference is, is that you're not making the landscaper rich by cutting grants, because there's not a lot to cut. Thank you very much for the opportunity this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Matthew Nicholson. And then after Matthew is Denny Wilson, and she'll be the last one.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Nicholson. I am here to talk about IMSPLOSS today, just to raise awareness. IMSPLOSS is the Mobility Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. It's going to be on your ballot in the upcoming election. And IMSPLOSS is a 1% sales tax to raise $11 billion over the next 30 years for transit in Cobb County. 1.45 billion of those dollars are planned for projects here in Mableton. This has the potential to have a big impact in Cobb County and in Mableton, so I want to make sure people are aware of it. Some of the projects that are planned are door-to-door micro-transit. You can schedule a pickup from your home to get you to a destination within the county and back. There are also $1 billion stated for transit-supported projects, like multi-use trails, sidewalk improvements, roadway improvements, and also improvements to intersections. There is plans for six new transit centers in Cobb County, two of which would be within the city of Mableton. And also expanded bus service, including BRT service, another rapid bus transit. It will be the last item on your ballot, and you can get more information about it at cobbcounty.org/IMSPLSS.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson.
And Denny Wilson, last one.
Good evening. I have two things this evening. I'm glad that the gentleman mentioned about the IMSPLOSS, because it is the last thing on the ballot. But the first thing on the ballot is another penny. So, you got the amendment number one, which is a penny increase on the state sales tax, which is supposed to cap your assessment value for your home at 3%. But cities and counties can opt out of it if they want to. And guess what they're going to do? They're going to opt out. And you're going to be stuck paying that one penny, plus you're going to be stuck paying the one penny IMSPLOS tax. So, then taxes in Cobb County will go up to 8 cents on the dollar. So, keep that in mind when you go to vote for the IMSPLOS. Because it's an $11 billion tax. 4 billion of that money is, is the, is only 4 billion used for infrastructure. 7 billion will be put in operating costs, which means they can use it for whatever they want to. And if you want to really realize how this works, look no further than the city of Atlanta. They're going through problems right now with their SPLS. They had a 40-year, half-penny sales tax. They spent the bulk of their money in operating costs. So, now the city council is worried because they think that they're not going to have money to do their roadways, their capital expenditure projects. And last but not least, I don't know if you guys know about the building that's going up on the corner of Mableton Parkway and Veterans Memorial? And I don't know if this is true, but I plan to dig deep and find out. I've been told that there's an adult novelty shop going into that shopping center. And that's why I was really, really pushing you guys to take over zoning long before now. And I'm happy to see this zoning paperwork here tonight. I mean, it brings me great joy. Because I was up around Flint Hill Anderson Mill on Monday, and those yellow zoning signs are everywhere. And they're for townhomes. So, take a ride up there, and you'll see.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. And thank you to everyone who spoke this evening. And we take our public comments seriously, and we take heed to what you're saying, so we do appreciate it. We're going to move on to our consent agenda, which is item 10. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda's work session for September 11th, as well as the regular meeting minutes on September 25th.
Make a motion to approve our agenda as written.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. We'll move on to our next item, which is unfinished business. We don't have any at this time. And so, we'll move to item 12A, which is our new business, which is consideration and approval of award and authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute contract in substantial form with CSC General Contractors, Inc. for construction services at 6116 Maybourn and Parkway. Chad Kastner is the Director and Program Manager of AEI. We actually had a work session on this past Monday, October 7th, regarding, you know, our agenda. And this particular item is to assess and thoroughly investigate this property to ensure that it meets all the necessary requirements. We had Mr. Chad Kastner speak, and we're blessed that all permits have been approved. So, we have been greenlit to move forward as plan with the next steps, which would include the design and build-out of the facility. And the work now is being distributed amongst the subcontractors to complete. So, the next step is to request the approval of the council for this work to be complete by GSC General Contractors. At this time, City Manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. This facility, 6116 Maybourn and Parkway, will house both our planning and zoning department, Community Development Department, which would encompass our planning and zoning function, and it will also house our code enforcement department. So, that gets us a place for two of the required three services we need for active status. I'm real excited about getting this thing going and hopefully have it ready for us when people will be in there as soon as possible. So, I ask the council to support and approve the contract and funding for the job.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion for the consideration and approval of award and to authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute contract in substantial form with CSC General Contractors, Incorporated, for construction services at 6116 Maybourn and Parkway.
Motion to for consideration and approval of award and authorize mayor to negotiate and execute contract in substantial form with CSC General Contractors, Inc. for construction services at 6116 Maybourn and Parkway. Chad Kastner, Director, Program Manager, Management of AEI.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Can we?
Aye.
I was going to do discussion. Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, discussion first.
Should we discuss the topic before voting on it?
I mean, we can, but I was going to just vote, but if you want to discuss it, we can.
I was going to ask, do we need to state the amount of the contract?
Yes, ma'am. It's in the agenda. I think it's 324.
To that point, we, during the work session, we brought up a portion that was going to be included.
Yes.
And it is, so the amount that's in here.
It's already included.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, it is.
Mr. Chad Kastner, who's the project manager, what's the total cost on the bill?
The total is 324,814 dollars, excuse me, and 5 cents. And that does include that additional air conditioning unit, which the tenant would then reimburse the city for half of. The, not tenant, excuse me, the property owner.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and just to be clear, the document itself says 313 that I'm reading. Am I supposed to be finding the updated? The revised document, is the one?
I voted the contract. I didn't change all the other stuff that was in there.
Yeah, the, thanks. A clerk did state the contract is in there. If you scroll down to the bottom of the contract, it shows the total price. The total price is 324.
Okay, so it is the last document in the, in the doc. Okay. Got it. Just wanted to make sure we.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that, actually. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion for the consideration and approval of award and authorize mayor to negotiate. Well, we didn't say the 324. We didn't say the amount.
We have another question.
I'm asking for another vote to include the amount that changed from the 313 to the 324.
Okay, already had a motion in here, but are you going to amend it?
Right. So, I'd like to amend the motion to include the 324,000. All those in favor say aye.
Well, let's make the motion.
Parliamentary, uh, is that, can you amend it?
She just.
Well, the maker of the motion would have to accept the friendly amendment to have the amount to, not to exceed the amount as stated by Mayor Pro Tem. And I, who was the maker of the motion? So, if he's okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with it.
And then Councilmember Ferguson seconded.
And I'm okay with amending.
Okay. And then all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Okay, the ayes have it. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Approval of funding for 1245 Veterans Memorial Highway Build-Out for Administrative Offices. City Manager.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. We still have one more bid coming in with the, this is the internal contractor. She stated the last bid came in at about $456,000, and we both agreed that was excessive. The bid that we think she's going to go with is the one that may be in the package, which shows 193. We may have an adjustment before some plumbing. And so, I'm going to ask the council to, for a motion to approve funding for the build-out of 1245 not to exceed $225,000.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of funding for the build-out at 1245 Veterans Memorial Highway for our administrative offices not to exceed 225,000.
Motion to approve the funding for 1245 Veterans Memorial Highway Build-Out for the administrative offices not to exceed $225,000.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Alright, the ayes have it. Thank you. Alright, this brings us to item, Agenda Item C, First Read of an Ordinance, Creating Chapter 8 Building and Construction and for Other Purposes. Our City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So, this item is actually the creation of Chapter 8 of your, the Mableton Code of Ordinances. And this particular Chapter 8 is a very special chapter because it is one of your transitional pieces to transition the city through the transition period to an active, formal active municipality by the end of transition. So, this is, this basically consists of four articles, and one of the articles has six divisions. Those articles being, and actually, before I get into the contents, this is modeled off of, so what I did is I looked at the county's Building and Construction Code, and then I also looked at the more recent cities to incorporate, and I looked at their codes because obviously their codes would be more recently updated. And they would, their city codes are more tailored to your operations in the county's code. So, I looked at, I thought that Brookhaven and Peachtree Corners had particularly nice codes. And then between the two, I did prefer Brookhaven. So, it's modeled off of Brookhaven as well as with provisions from the county code. So, that being said, there are four articles, and those articles being the general article, which deals with the definition and building numberings, and then the construction and technical code. The construction and technical code, this is basically the meat of the enforcement under this ordinance. And if you go to the construction and technical code, that is page... Actually, my microphone's covering this. So, that is page 45 of 483. But if you look here, and I'll just enumerate, you don't have to flip to it, but it says that you're just adopting, as all other cities, as most cities, the International Building Code, International Residential Code, Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, Fuel/Gas Code, Electrical Code, Energy Conservation Code, Fire Code, Swimming, Pool and Spa Code. So, your residents won't see any change. You're not adopting new codes. It's just you're formally saying that these codes are recognized and enforced within the city of Mableton. So, you also have the Administration and Enforcement Code, and then that just deals with your personnel. The officials and employees or contractors who will be delegated by you to enforce the provisions of this code. And then your administration code is the, a good portion of the meat of this, of this chapter. It deals with a general section, and then it deals with variances and appeals. Your variances and appeals will be facilitated by your Board of Zoning Appeals. And that's actually going to be up for public hearing on the 23rd, as well as adoption on the 23rd. So, they will use the provisions that are within this code to hear cases that deal with the building and construction. Because obviously, they'll also be hearing cases that deal with your zoning code. So, this would just be another duty and responsibility of your Board of Zoning Appeals. And then it deals with permits, certificates of occupancy, inspections, and just some additional restrictions. And then the final subsection of this is what's known as the Multi-Family Rental Housing Code. This, that's Article 4, and that was taken from Cobb County. And I'll give you the page number for that. It starts at page... Had it. Here we go. Yeah, here we go. So, it starts at page 75. So, this section was put in place by Cobb County for multifamily residential established, commercial business establishments that are renting out multifamily units. So, it requires them to, before they get their occupation tax certificate, to give the city an inspection report showing that they have inspected at least 25% of the rental units. If there are issues within that inspection report, they also have to give the building official a suitable plan for remediation of those issues. And they would be required to submit that and go through that process with the city annually. So, that is included as well. This is a living, breathing document. It will change based on input by the council. It will change based on input by the public when we have a public hearing. If the council is agreeable to making whatever modifications it deems reasonable and necessary. And we have a, we have a public hearing that's scheduled on this for October 23rd. Ordinarily, you don't, you're not required to do a public hearing, but because you are bringing over, for the most part, chunks of other codes, just to be sure that there was nothing tucked in here that may reasonably be considered to be a zoning decision, I felt that it was probably safest to just have a public hearing on it and have the public comment and input. So, you have that scheduled for October 23rd. And then you're on path for your, it's either, I think it's the first meeting in November. I have, I provided Bill with a schedule for the implementation and the adoption of this, but it's one of your earlier meetings in December. You're on schedule to adopt this and to make it formal and official. And then that will officially put you in place of having your first transitional leg.
And you said scheduled to adopt in December, not November, right?
No, November, the first week of November. Not the first week, but your first meeting. You have, I think you have two meetings that are really close. And I think the first one was a workshop, so it would be your second meeting, but they're days apart.
Okay.
Could you repeat that again? So, this will be adopted, was the plan to adopt this?
November.
So, I have actually a chart that I created. If it's okay, I can just forward you the email that I sent to administration, and it includes the dates. Is that okay, Councilwoman?
Yes.
And that will have all the dates, not only for the building code, but also for the zoning implementation, as well as your third transitional leg, which is the waste management. So, I'll send that to you immediately after the meeting.
Yeah, I'm actually looking for it now. I got it, and I'll forward it.
Oh, okay.
And I may be able to call the date out if you need to.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion on Agenda Item C?
Uh, yeah, the only, there's several, or there was a relook at all of the code that's in here versus what's currently Cobb County's code and others that they were going to look into. When should we expect to have that back?
So, Bill is having administration give feedback on that. Bill, I don't know if you have a date, but.
Yeah, I'm looking for that calendar now, but we think set before October 23rd. I have someone reviewing it from administration purposes, and they told me as of yesterday, they're pretty much done, and the ordinance looks pretty solid so far. And so, I'll get a formal feedback from an administration/operation standpoint.
And you know what we're talking about from Monday's work session, there were several pieces that were pointed out that might be older?
So, I think that was actually for Item D that we haven't discussed yet, but it was.
Oh, same.
Yes, that's, that's the zoning code that you're referring to. But Bill, also out of caution, I recommended, and he readily agreed, that it would be good to have the employees and administration and people who would be implementing this to also look at it and to provide feedback before your final adoption. So, he has that in place as well, in progress.
City police and all that, so it's still this.
Okay, any other, any other discussion on Agenda Item C? Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item D. This is the First Read of an Ordinance Creating. This is the First Read of an Ordinance, Creating Chapter 10, Article 1, Planning and Zoning of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances, Establishing a Mableton Zoning Code and Zoning Map and for Other Lawful Purposes. Is Mr. Miller here? Okay.
No, Mayor Protem, Mr. Miller or Mr. Hosack are not here. And I did reach out to see if they would be, and they are not attending.
I can, okay, okay. So this item is actually your second transitional leg, which is on schedule for completion in November as well. So this is gonna be your zoning code. So it's gonna have three components. It's, and actually, I'm just gonna tuck in here. I meant, I forgot to mention to you on the Building and Construction Code that there is also a fee schedule that's at the end of it. And the fee schedule mirrors the county. So residents will see no change or increase. We didn't increase anything. But that is an attachment to the building code. I just, I forgot to tell you that. But this, similar to the building code, has a fee schedule also attached. And we used the county's fee schedule for that purpose as well. So this is going to be the creation, one, it's going to be your completion of your second transitional leg for your zoning. And then we'll use, after the adoption of this ordinance, we'll use that time period to meet with the county. The county has graciously agreed to have your staff and your officials, your planning commission and other people on administration shadow them to look at their processes. Rob is, IBTS is in the midst of getting a methodology in place for document exchange, for putting that all on the portal. So there'll probably be about a 45-day period where administration and the new hires will be acclimating themselves with the processes that you've put in place and ready to go hopefully by, it's whatever date you said. And I know that we have a retreat coming up for you to talk about this in more detail. But whatever date you set for the official takeover, it could be February 1st. It could be, I know the county has said for zoning, try to not bug them in January because that's just a tumultuous time of the year for them. They're doing their business license renewals, they're doing their regulatory renewals. They're dealing with zoning issues and zoning confirmations with the business licensing. So they will be less available if you transition it the 1st of January. So that's why, because you have the tools in place, my recommendation would be the 1st of February. But it's whatever date you said. And we'll have a retreat for you to discuss and give us direction on the date that you want to implement the administration component of it. So this is comprised of your new Chapter 10, which is your planning and zoning chapter. And then that Chapter 10 speaks about the two bodies who are going to be doing the majority of your committee or sub-body planning and zoning work. And that's gonna be your Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission. It also will incorporate the zoning map, which has not changed from Cobb County. So we're just lifting, shifting, putting it back down in front of Mableton. And then it will have the body, the meat of your, what will be known as the Mableton Zoning Code. And that's the document that ITBS spoke about at your last workshop. And then it will have the fee schedule. So this is, this is your first read. This is gonna be a living, breathing document. And we'll change it as we go through these processes, as you direct, as the public may recommend and you agree to. And then at your first meeting, at your first regular meeting in November, that will be the date that we ask you to adopt. And you can adopt on that date, you can adopt at the meeting thereafter. But we are on schedule for it to be ready for adoption, the first meeting of Nov, the first regular meeting of November.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, I do have the schedule that I can read out, but I'm actually trying to send you a copy.
Okay. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ock?
Thank you. I was under the impression that we were adopting this ordinance on October 23rd. Or is, are we gonna move it to November? Or does that impact, say, appointments?
So you have two zoning ordinances that are gonna be up for discussion on October 23rd. And that's gonna be this one, the big one, the one that's several hundreds of pages. And then you have your smaller one, which is just your bodies. So your, just the bodies are scheduled for adoption. They're scheduled for public hearing as well as adoption on the 23rd. But the meatier one, which is the several hundreds of pages, that is scheduled for. Cause we're anticipating you may give direction, you're gonna hear the public on this, and this document is quite lengthy. So I didn't think it would probably be practical to adopt this, given the size of it, the same day as the public hearing. So that will then be scheduled for adoption, the first regular meeting of November.
Does this ordinance reference the, so I see, there's a Attachment A, which is the 391-page zoning code? Is that, that's what you're talking about will be approved in November?
Correct.
But we're gonna approve this ordinance, which makes reference to that ordinance that does not exist yet until November?
So what, the first thing that you're gonna approve is going to be an ordinance that creates your Chapter 10, because it doesn't exist right now. So it will create your Chapter 10, and it will create Article 1. And Article 1 is simply your bodies. That's gonna be, and I might have the articles mixed up, Article 2 or 1. But the document only creates your bodies and speaks to your bodies. So it's one article. So when you adopt the bigger, meatier piece, that will be a separate article under your planning code. And that article will incorporate and reference your official Mableton zoning code, which is the larger document, as well as your fee schedule and your zoning map.
I guess, so on like Section 3 of Chapter 10 of this ordinance we're reviewing right now, it, it states the Mableton zoning code is hereby adopted and attached to this ordinance as Appendix A. So it's referencing the other ordinance.
Well, so your Appendix A is going to be the, the large document. So it's gonna be the, the meatier document. So that will be attached. But you're not adopting that on the 23rd. On the 23rd, you're adopting...
The smaller one.
The smaller one that deals just with the legislative bodies.
And I, and I did just send the transition schedule. If you wanna grab an email and I'll think to Susan, thank you.
Okay.
And of course, that is my, that was my proposed schedule to administration. We were anticipating having the retreat where we could discuss it and put it in front of you and just confirm. So we still will do that when you reschedule your retreat.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Any additional comments regarding this? Councilman Ferguson?
So there, we, we put out this 45-day shadowing period. Is that, and as we're looking to adopt the ordinance itself, building and construction, other purposes, planning and zoning, during that 45-day moratorium period, oh, sorry, during that 45-day period, is the idea to also adopt a moratorium on what actually, what actual zoning and happens during that point? Or when does that, when do we stop? Sorry for saying it this way. When do we stop Cobb County from determining what we're gonna do and give us time to get ready?
So the date that you take over, the date that you give direction, that you want to be the date that you administratively take over, that will be the date that I will send Cobb County a notice pursuant to your charter that says this is the official takeover date. Now, I assume that you're, that you mean, once you officially take it over, you may want a period of inactivity as your staff just gets more acclimated with these processes? And that's not abnormal at all. In fact, several cities, newer cities and newer incorporating cities do put moratoriums in place. If that's the desire of the council, I can easily give you a moratorium that puts a reasonable 30, 60, 3-day, whatever, 120-day period on development. And that can be discussed. I would probably defer that discussion to a little bit closer to maybe the month before you're going to take over administratively. But that certainly is a tool and vehicle that you have and that is often used by municipalities.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ferguson, the plan is, as the city attorney described, is we're, we're pushing hard to have adequate staff in place as fast as I can get them processed through. As you know, we got a, we'll be...
Sorry. Somebody's ring is driving me crazy.
Oh, yeah, someone's phone.
Somebody's ring doorbell is driving me crazy? Go ahead.
Can someone please put, you put your phone on silent, please? Oh, okay.
Yeah, our, our plan is to have staff, we worked with the county. And the plan is to have staff, as we bring them in, actually go and shadow onboard, work with the county on some of these operations. And then give me a call to say they're ready. Once they say they're ready, we anticipate having that, I would like to have that ready call by mid-December. Things happen. We've still got leases and buildings to build out. It's, I wish it can go as fast as it is in my brain, but there's delays. But when they're telling me they're ready, I will give the notice, and then you all will give the 30-day notice. And right now, the target date, the target date, unless the council, it's not my call, this is the council's call. But I do wanna caution you, if you put a football team together, you get them equipment, you definitely won't let them practice before you put them on the field. And so my philosophy is let them have a few dry runs, hang out county, get some things going, and we say, alright, we're ready. I'm not gonna delay that. We got that January transition time that slows things down. And I'm, and I'm anticipating February 1st is my personal deadline. But if the council says move that up, and as soon as we got stuff ready, we'll just go with it. But I just do wanna say, when we get time to make that decision, it stands out here. I thoroughly believe in, we've arranged with Cobb County to put some of our folks over there, code enforcement, some of our community development clerks, and our, our community development director, department director, just to get in and get a feel for things. And then, once these ordinance, I think, will be, they should all be adopted by November, we should be ready to pull the trigger. I'll just wait for a signal to them. If I have to expedite, I will. But if the council says we'd like to do it before, then we'll have a discussion and make it happen.
Thank you. And we've begun the conversations with GovPilot and all them about permitting and making sure that our fee schedule is up to date. Like, how much time do they need, honestly, to be able to get us set up that way?
So we've had our preliminary discussion, where we've given them preliminary documentation. We've told them what our needs are, and they are implementing that documentation. So once they get that in place, we'll have a follow-up meeting. But they are working, working with us actively and getting us in process. They very well could be likely ready to go even before we're ready, because they are working on that now. But it is in progress.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, city manager, you said February 1st as the targeted date. Is there anything, I mean, obviously outside of personnel that could impede that progress? Is that, that's best-case scenario?
That's best-case scenario. Let's say if these buildings don't get built out, and we don't have any place for people to come in and put a permit in, then obviously I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to back out and say, but I, Chad is here, I'll put him on the spot.
If we don't have a good community development director.
Yeah, I, I, if everything converges, staff, building, software, and we can nail it, and I get a good feel from our community development director that the team is ready, I'm pretty, I'm very confident that February 1st is a realistic date. And it also aligns with my discussions with the county, as they go dead in January. And that has allowed us to have an agreement to one, shadow, talk, discuss. And then anything that starts over there, we'll finish over there. And then once we assume and begin, we own it. And so you can never figure these things out by detail to the day, but that is the projected plan. And I'm pretty, I can't foresee, unless Hurricane Helene comes, you know, it's hard to, I, I can't see something to stop that. But things happen. Buildings don't get built on time, folks get tied up with inspections, things happen. So, but that's my goal.
So, real quick question. You keep, you, you bring up the building. Even if a building isn't erected, do we still have the, would that truly stop us from being able to?
Absolutely. Somebody's coming in with plans, you gotta have plans reviewed. We don't have the space upstairs. We're barely handling business licenses in that space we have. I wouldn't wanna put staff in a position where they have to play football on a baseball field.
I'm from the hood, we did it all the time. Sorry.
So, and, and, and keep this in mind, June 25th is the real deadline. But I'm not looking at June 25th, but to, but to, but to throw the team in the game before they're ready could be catastrophe. So I would love them to have the space, the address where people know to come and handle this business. And so, yes, the building is a big part, I will say that. It, it better be ready before March.
Chad?
Yeah, Mr. Cass, now we're counting on you. Go ahead.
Will we be getting the, the deep dive that Chris Miller mentioned that he and Mr. Hosack will be doing to kinda make sure that everything kinda jives with some of these other smaller topics in our zoning? Will we be getting that before our next meeting? So that we can get a complete, like, if we're gonna take the time to read through the 400 pages, actually?
And I'll let the city attorney talk about that portion, but here's a realistic check. I don't care how perfect that document is. There's gonna be things that staff is gonna pick up that we didn't see, we couldn't see, and they'll be, just have to make adjustments. There are well-established cities that still have to adjust things because of, somebody created a thing called a food truck. Or we got people out selling fruit on the corner and we didn't address it, you know, this, that. And I'm not, just throwing examples out there. So you can get, yes, I believe Rob and them will go through deep dives, you get a chance to read it. It's a large document. And I, no one can pretend to say that they read through that whole document and memorize it. What happens is almost like a law book. When a case, when a case comes up, you wanna have something to reference to handle the case. So yes, I think you will get a deep dive, but I don't wanna mislead you thinking that it will cause us to fully comprehend. We really are gonna learn a lot once we start practicing and doing. And I hope that answers questions. But yes, Rob is supposed to come back and answer questions at that level. And correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Attorney.
That's correct.
And 400 pages is pretty comprehensive. Is it typical to have some sort of summary document that we could reference? I mean, 400 pages is a lot.
That's why I say, and I know we're in an open counseling, but here's the realistic. If, if I get an attorney, there is no attorney that remembers every law in the book. They do research, find a law, interpret it and apply it. You, you, and so y'all can read it. You should read it. But the real value in that ordinance from our subject matter experts is they're supposed, that's why we hired them. Comb this document and make sure it is ready and it fits lift, sift and shift and it fits Mableton. But I can just about guarantee you, and Amelia has alluded to this, I mean, the city attorney, Madam Attorney has alluded to this on a few times. There's still gonna be operational oversights that are gonna come up. But as long as our team, our staff has that document to go to when a question comes up or when someone makes an application, and they can find it and get to it, I feel comfortable, we're gonna be fine. And I guess I'm trying, I'm not discouraging y'all to try to read it, memorize it, but it's just, how do I say this? It's not what really happens in real life. I don't, if I ask Amelia to tell me to quote all the laws right now, she's gonna pull up a phone and a book. She's gonna research it, unless you have it all in your brain.
No, I, I agree with what you're saying, but my question for the council is... The version that you have, is it, I don't wanna use the word interactive, but like if you click on a heading, will it take you directly to that heading? Is that the version that you have?
Yes.
Yes.
You do?
If you click on the heading, it'll take you to, like Illumination, I just clicked on that, that's on page 229.
Okay, okay. I wanted to at least make sure that you were working from that version or reviewing from that version.
And I think the, the big deal is, and I'll speak for myself and not the rest of the council. A year and a half ago, when we started running for office, part of the big reason we were running for office is zoning, is code enforcement, is the idea that we were going to have, be integral parts in making sure that we made the city of Mableton what we wanted the city of Mableton to be. So when Councilwoman Ock brings up the backyard chickens and other things like that that are in this code, those are things that our constituents have concerns about. And we want to make sure that we know what it is that we're adopting so that we can go have viable conversations. I, I can tell you how many times I have talked to people about, well, why are all these trucks sitting out in front of my house? And it's the person next door who has, you know, a trucking company. But I need to be able to tell them, well, this is the code, and this is how we're going to affect that code. So while I get what we're saying, it's a big document, I can pretty much tell you that everybody on this council will read all three hundred and ninety-one pages of that document and understand what that document says. So let's not slough them off, but let's make sure that we're doing that actual deep dive into the document so that we get this right.
And I, and I do think it's important for us to drill down and do our, do a deep dive. And it's also equally as important, you know, to know where to go to get that information. So to your point, you can go in, you can actually query to find what it is that you're looking for. And then we will also have staff in place to be able to support us, because there'll be the specialists as well. So I think it's going to, you know, take a communal effort, everyone involved, to be able to, you know, support that, so. Any other comments, questions? This is a first read, so we'll have an opportunity on both C and D to go back and, you know, do some research and ask some follow-up questions in our upcoming meetings. Okay, we'll go ahead on and move on to Agenda Item thirteen, Other Business Discussion, Other Business slash Discussion. I don't think we have any at this time. So we'll move on to Agenda Item fourteen. Mr. City Manager, any announcements or comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor Protem. I, I want to give a shout out to another one of our employees, and she's been a superstar lately, Ms. Allison Benson. She's been carrying this torch. She came in under Lily's wing, and, you know, we were keeping Lily in our prayers. But Allison has, has carried the workload of both. With Lily still working, we're trying to get her to stop at home with helping stuff. But Allison has really been there. And I don't need to tell you about who she is as a mom, but the sacrifice that she's making for this city should not go unrecognized. When I came out to food truck Friday the other night, and I seen her in a stroller and her baby out there making it happen, and I can't help but be more proud of someone to have that kind of staff. So I just want to always remind the council, when you got good people, take care of them. They, they do a lot more than we pay them for. So I wanted to shout her out. And then I wanted to also state that I actually ought to be in prayer for our, our financial consultant, Mr. Chris Pike, who lost his mom today.
Oh, wow.
And, and he still responds to emails and asks the tough questions. And I'm trying not to get him to bother stuff, but we probably just want to just ask you all to pray for him. And, and our staff, we may send him a card, but just to let you know. And that's all, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Our prayers go out to Mr. Pike and his family. Okay, Madam, Madam Clerk? Oh, yep, Madam Clerk?
No comments.
Okay, Madam Attorney?
No comments, Mayor Protem.
Councilman Ferguson, you get a chance to go before me tonight. District one, Councilman Davis?
Yes, just a couple of things here. First, I want to announce that the Ostea Community Task Force will have a symposium that will be on October the nineteenth at the South Cobb Recreation Center. This symposium actually was birthed out of what's called their Justice for All Committee. The Justice for All Committee of the Ostea Community Task Force is the social justice arm of the task force. These symposiums were being held prior to COVID, up until, I think, nineteen, the nineteen, two thousand and nineteen. They centered around where do we want to go as a community? Now, and I'm going to dare say this, but this is a, the community of now Mableton, that was unincorporated Ostea, is a longstanding, and I'll, I'll say even a historic, community. Now, this community has a chance to move forward as being part of a city. And it's always my belief that the most healthy communities are the ones that are most engaged. So the Justice for All Committee is going to have this symposium. Where do we go from here to promote community engagement? To understand where do we want to go as a community? And the best ways of getting there. And the best ways of getting there is by going, getting there together. So I'm inviting the community out to come be a part of this symposium, to venture your ideas, to listen to where we are, and listen to where we want to go, and provide input to where we want to go. So I'm inviting everyone out. We'll have some very distinguished people. The guy with the biggest head there, well, that's me, but I'm going to be hosting.
How old is that picture?
Please come. And if you have any questions, you can forward them. We'll get to as many as we can, but really, this is a, a, a perfect and applicable time to be engaged with the community. Other than that, we want to lift up our prayers for those who are about to experience one of the worst storms in its history, probably, in Florida with Hurricane Milton. I remember when my folks went through Katrina, and some of my relatives went without power for ten days in ninety-plus degree weather. So we need to definitely keep them in prayer. And that's all I have. So good night, have a great one, and I will be quiet.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilwoman Oladipo, District two?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I don't have any comment tonight. I am pushing to get us out of here before eight, as promised, City Manager.
Eight-thirty.
But thank you so much, everyone, for coming tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oladipo. Councilwoman Ock?
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to make this quick to help hasten the adjournment. So October twelfth, this Saturday, from ten AM to four PM is the Mabel House Harvest Festival. This is a free, family-friendly event brought to you by Cobb Parks and the Friends of the Mabel House. There will be activities for all ages with live music, farmyard animals, food, and fun. So that's this Saturday, October twelfth. Next Saturday, October nineteenth, our Giving Garden located at seventy-five Cooper Lake Road will have trick-or-treat at the garden and fall market. They will have a vendor market with local goods for sale and children's activity, and that will be from four PM to seven PM next Saturday. And then also, next Saturday, is Keep Cobb Beautiful Paint Amnesty Event. It's on October nineteenth in the morning from nine AM until noon. You must register to participate. You're limited to ten gallons of paint per vehicle. This will be located at Jim R. Miller Park. So if you're interested in giving up some paint, please register with Keep Cobb Beautiful. And that's all I have for tonight, everyone, thank you. Oh, and just remember, our zoning hearing will be October twenty-third.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ock, Councilman Ferguson, District five.
I too will be very brief. Hope everybody was well. As Councilman Davis said, we are in the midst of hurricane season, and I want to ensure that everybody's doing what we stated as a city was important. Look out for our city, our citizens and the betterment of the country and locally. In that vein, Hurricane Helen had a significant impact on several communities to our south. Luckily, us here in Mableton, we just got a free grass watering, but that wasn't the case for many other people throughout our, our environment. So the Green Room Restaurant is hosting a hurricane relief benefit on November seventeenth from twelve to eight, and they are asking for donations of clothing and money to support. They also have a host of live music events. And if you don't know the Green Room, they've got great pizza, great, oh, my goodness, and some of the off-menu items that they do, yes. I can't go there because my, my waistline does not support it that often, but I love going up there and speaking with Linda and the crew. So they have a bunch of live music events that are going to be leading up and to November and just everything else. So gifts would be accepted then as well. Please check them out on Facebook for more information. Also, our friends at the Family Life Restoration Center are offering free virtual health care with Mr. Michael Giglio and his team, Tuesday, Fridays, and the first and third Wednesdays of the month. Shifting gears, since my neighbor from District five, Mr. Nicholson, stole my thunder, I too want to challenge you all to educate yourself about the insplosive. From this seat I hold, I can only say this is an important issue for the city of Mableton, and we can talk offline if you want my opinion. Lastly, I'd like to reiterate the need for you to submit community events to us via the website. There is a button that leads you to a form at the top of the community events page on www.mableton.gov. Please use it. You can find a number of events that have already been submitted, and Ms. Allison Benson, our awesome office manager, loves to receive these notices via this vehicle. And she has been very diligent to add them to the site. Thank you, Allison. So please continue to, to submit there. You can find things out about what's going on in the community as well as what's going on here at council. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Ferguson. District six, Councilwoman Harden?
Well, as usual, everyone has already said everything that I was going to say.
We're going to start from the back next time.
Ditto, ditto down the line. So thank everyone for coming out. And I just wanted to confirm, on the twenty-third is when we have our appointments for, is it the twenty-third? Our next meeting? We have appointments for
Our cabs.
Our ethics and our planning and zoning, correct? Yeah. So I see one of my constituents here, so I'm making an announcement now, you know, that we'd love to see you on, on the twenty-third. And that's it for me. Everyone, have a good night, and thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'll, I'll try to continue the trend of brevity. Okay, I'd like to take the opportunity to give a few special birthday shout-outs. First, to our city manager, Bill Tanks, who celebrated a milestone last Monday was his birthday. And then also Councilwoman Oladipo, who celebrated her birthday last Tuesday. So I hope both of you had an amazing birthday. We really do appreciate you. We're grateful to have both of you on our team, and here's to many more birthdays. Last Friday, we had an opportunity, well, actually, I skipped the gun. So I mentioned last month that we had a, an opportunity to host Pebblebrook High School Special Needs Class for a city hall trip here at the epicenter. And they had an opportunity to participate in several activities, learn about civic leadership in addition to conducting an exercise that was Build a City. And they really enjoyed themselves, had a lot of fun. And I just wanted to share the photos that I didn't get a chance to share last month, so. So last Friday, the mayor and Sheriff Owens, they hosted the second food truck Friday, and we really did have a fantastic time. It was in celebration of the Hispanic Heritage Month. And we couldn't have had a better turnout. It was a lot of folks that came out to eat and just enjoy the festivities. I just want to give a special shout-out to the food truck vendors. The tacos were truly amazing, and the local businesses, and also to the Democracy Center. They had a table set out, they were informing the residents about, you know, educating them about voting and giving them a timeline, so nonpartisan. So it was really a great time and a great event, and we, we enjoyed ourselves. Councilwoman Ock already mentioned the Mabel House Harvest Festival. You can use the QR ID code if you would like to, to find out additional information about that. This is very important to me, near and dear to my heart. We Care Vet Fair that's happening, that's going to take place November first and November second on the weekend. It's from nine to five on Saturday and nine to three on Sunday. So for the veterans that are in the Mableton community, this is an opportunity for you to be able to have a free resource fair with over a hundred-plus agencies. They can help you with enrolling in VA healthcare, providing you with identification in addition to filing your VA claim if you want. But this is, this is going to be great. So please make sure you tell a fellow veteran that this is going to take place, and you can scan the QR code to find out more. We've already pressed upon everyone to be safe because of the inclement weather that is, is approaching. We may get, you know, some heavy rain, and there's been an uptick in traffic as well. So be patient. You know, those Floridians are navigating, some are coming here to the Atlanta area, so please be patient and also be safe. And last but not least, I always say this, please go out and vote. We have three dates that are coming up, October fifteenth and November first is early voting. I want to encourage you to take advantage of that. We know the general election will take place on November fifth, and then the, the potential election runoff will be December third. Okay? That's all I have. At this time, I don't anticipate a need for us to go into executive session. So I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Our meeting?
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilwoman Ock and a second from Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
I wish you would.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.